To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are not.
All right.
But there are updated claims in front of you.
Oh, that's different than what's in our packet?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, we'll entertain a motion to accept the agenda.
I'll make a motion.
The motion is our second.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second, any further discussion from the council?
No.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Item D, approval of minutes, the minutes for the July sixteenth, regular meeting and the HRA meeting were included with your packet, are there any changes to those? Not, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion from the council? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Item E, citizens input, nobody here, so we're gonna move along. Item F, council committee report, Parks and Planning Commission update. Jason?
That's me.
That's you.
All right, Parks and Planning met last week, August fourteenth, and we discussed possibly, well, not that Parks and Planning would play an active role in it, but we discussed, just had an open discussions, an informational discussion about the orderly annexation of, possibly, of the Cafferty property on the west end of town because there's been some developers that have some interest in it. So there was a discussion about that. We also accepted the only application for Parks and Planning, we have a vacancy and we, our applicant Barb Ginningsman, which we're gonna put that in front of us tonight, right? And then we also just had kind of a soft opening, soft start on what's to come with the safer houses school.
Oh, okay. Good. All right.
That's it. Is that okay?
Great. Thanks, Jason. All right, we will move along, we have two items on the consent agenda, one of them Jason just mentioned was the appointment of the Parks and Planning Commission member, and the other is consider accepting our reports and payment of claims, which, or I mentioned, the updated claims are in front of us, so there's nothing we can discuss on that, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion from the council? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Item H, set a public hearing for fiscal year 2020, treaty taxation hearing for December third. We're just setting the date?
Yes.
We don't actually have a public hearing right now?
Correct.
It's under that?
Yep.
You want that in the form of a motion?
You know, we should do that, because we send it off to the county.
Okay.
Good.
And is that a regular, that's not a regular meeting?
Yes, it's, well, it's our first meeting in December. The last few years, we've been having it the first Tuesday in December.
Oh, right, right.
And then recessing for the rest of the month.
Yep. Okay.
Good.
All right, well, we'll entertain a motion to set that date.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion from the council? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item I, department reports, Heart Lake Wine Spirits financials, no one's here, but are you, do you wanna give us a rundown, or?
Yeah, you know, the financials are there, show a small profit of about $5,000 for the month. One thing I actually wanted to highlight was from our staff meeting today, we were putting a lot of time, trust, and faith in our staff, and frankly, in the budgets that we're working on. Notably, what I think is interesting is our purchasing or expenditure budgets are about $14,000 over budget, but that being said, our revenue is also $85,000 higher than we anticipated, which is almost 20% higher.
Like year-to-date, you mean?
Year-to-date through August.
Wow.
And now what we're doing with this buying plan is to hopefully spend down this inventory that we have in place.
Right.
And so far, over the last couple of months that we've had this budget in place, it's actually following that same trajectory. So, no celebration yet, we're still, still holding on, but it's going in that right direction, I believe.
Any, any feedback or any analytical information on like, with the, the sales that have taken place?
Yes.
That we, is it immediate, or are people commenting on it, are people coming in to take advantage of it?
So what we can tell you, actually Jason and Meyer are working on a little bit better report on this, I'm gonna just tell you anecdotally information, I guess. Right now, we have almost 1,000 people enrolled in our loyalty program, which is actually more than we actually thought we had in terms of regular customers, which tells us that we have new people coming into the store. The other item that we have with just some of the more recent wine sales, for example, we can show that we have increases in other sale items, or other items in the store that coincide with like the wine sale, meaning that people come in for wine, or that they buy wine plus other products. Does that make sense?
Yep.
But again, they're working on a more robust thing, because sales and discounts is a big thing that we're scrutinizing this year.
They can use that program anytime they want to, right? I mean, they can, are they actively using it? Are people actively using it, redeeming anything, or they, or do you, we still kinda think that this could be something at the end of the year that could sneak up on us at Christmas?
People are actively redeeming it, and not at the rate that we're seeing, and we don't know if that's a matter of bounce back, but almost always when the till, or the, the sales clerk, I should say, sees that you're able to redeem points, they verbalize that and they redeem the points.
Oh.
Which again, goes back to the, we're seeing different than new traffic as part of that.
Okay. Which they should really continue doing that, because that is gonna prevent that, I mean, help prevent.
Right.
That year-end scramble.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else?
Thank you.
No.
All right, we don't need to do anything with that, right? We don't need to accept it. Okay. All right, let's move on to new business. Item A, consider resolution providing for the competitive sale of the Geo Tiff bonds.
Yep.
I'm assuming that's why you're here, Shannon, huh?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, Shannon Swinney from David Brown Associates. In your packet, we had a cover letter and a resolution that initiates the competitive sale of bonds for the Villas project. Those improvements are presently under construction, we've awarded a contract, we're well underway. We have a construction engineering contingency budget of $593,000, development fees associated with project of $94,000, underwriting finance and legal and rating fee that bring our total project cost to $736,950. We're intending to start the process to competitively sell $735,000 in bonds for the project. Repayment on those bonds will be from tax increments and lot sales generated for the Villas project. We have a commitment from a developer to purchase lots on a regular basis, we factored in that revenue along with tax increments generated by the new housing that's gonna be constructed there. We have relative commitment for construction as well from the same developer that is willing to purchase the lots, and we are gonna use the new property taxes generated by those newly constructed homes to help pay this bond off along with the lot sales revenue. We created a tax increment financing district just a little while ago for this purpose, and this is putting that tool to use. And so, our schedule is to authorize the sale process this evening, we would intend to award the sale at your September seventeenth meeting and close on or about October first, which would be when funds would be available to pay project costs. We're hitting the bond market at a very good time if rates continue where they're at today. On the attached analysis, you know, on the roughly twenty-five-year term on the project financing, I have a net effective interest rate of about 2.66%. When we were planning for this project, we started at three and a half, went to 3.35, and now we're down to 2.66.
Wow, nice.
And frankly, the market's probably a little bit better than that even today. So, if rates hold, we might take advantage of a good point to sell bonds. So, more than happy to answer questions on the resolution initiating the process. Ultimately, we're preparing an offering document that's distributed to underwriters, we're purchasing a credit rating in this process because underwriters will evaluate this based on the credit rating that we purchase, and accepting bids for the purchase of the bonds that we'll present to you at your next meeting in September. So, that's when the rate would be fixed at that time, so, again, we're hoping for things to stay in the realm where they're at, because interest rates are very good right now.
So the bond is just for the street utilities, right?
And the development fees.
Yeah, that is something that we did roll in, so the city development fees, like park dedication fees and so forth, we'll actually retain upfront through the financing.
Okay. And what if the builder doesn't buy and build like we planned, I mean, I see the $40,000 per parcel figure, but?
Yeah, so there's basically two safety nets built in, one, we have capitalized interest for two years to allow the development to get underway without substantial bond payments being made. The other is requiring two years equivalent bond payments from the contractor before we go into default. Those two are relatively strong assurances, and if they go into default, we would seek a new developer to work with.
Okay.
So it's not totally risk-free, but we've attempted to mitigate to the best of our ability.
I have a question that might be for you.
Sure.
So you can wrap, I can wrap my head around this a little bit better. The, the $40,000 versus the $10,000?
It's $10,000. It's 10,000 per lot.
Right.
They have a takedown schedule, that's multiple lots per year, so.
But if the, if the income restrictions aren't met though, or the, whatever's applied to that, it's 40, where does that 30 come from then? Where does the additional 30?
That's the new property taxes generated by the homes that are being built in this subdivision, based on an average estimated market value of about $200,000 a year. So, we created a Tiff district, we're capturing those new property taxes, they're not going to the general fund or, you know, other places, we're capturing those along with some county tax and school district tax, and we're using those to pay off the bonds associated with building the improvements.
Over a 26-year period typically.
Right, yeah, my question though was, it just seemed like if, if, if it's not being sold for $10,000 a parcel, but then all of a sudden it gets switched to $40,000 a parcel, where does the other $30,000 come from? Who's making up that $30,000?
Yeah, so that would come from the actual buyer themselves, so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So the house could be sold at a higher value than the market value, and I don't anticipate somebody's gonna spend $30,000 more.
Neither do we, but that being said, if, basically.
Is that kinda how we, kinda pushing people into this?
Yeah.
This is what we want in these Villas?
Exactly.
Okay.
I mean, that, like, de facto, you're correct with that. Keep in mind that the income requirements are relatively high, I think for a family of two, it's like 89,000 plus or minus, and for most retired folks, that's not regular income that they see on an annual basis, so we feel that they are most likely going to easily meet that income requirement to meet that's, that lesser dollar.
Yeah, I didn't wanna, I didn't want us to be kinda caught off guard with, we're looking at, you know, a year down the road or something, and that, and the contractor, the developer comes out and says, "I can't get these sold because everybody, they're coming at us, they don't meet these requirements," and now they're asking for some type of forgiveness back, help, you know, can you help us?
Yeah, that is a risk, I mean, to some capacity, we're assuming a level of risk by taking on a general obligation bond to support this project. Again, I think through the mechanisms that we've set up, we've mitigated those to a pretty high level, but not 100%, you're right. Keep in mind, again, it's, it's actual income per year that caps at 89,000. So things like social security and other sources of revenue or income are typically under that, at that age.
Yep.
And your actual retirement accounts and investments are not counted in that figure.
The developer in this instance had initially thought they had to meet the rental income limits for Tiff, which are significantly lower, and they were willing to proceed under those guidelines, which were about a third of what the actual owner-occupied guidelines are. And so, again, what Nick is saying is accurate, most senior households have lots of assets, but their income tends to be, you know, within the parameters that are allowed under state statute, so we feel pretty good about it.
So if they're purchased at the $40,000 price, are they, they're still part of the Tiff district, right?
No.
No.
We have to kick it out.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yep.
Okay, I see. Then, are they still limited to what they can build?
No, well, they're, only if there's a covenant.
There is a covenant, and they would be restricted to the product.
Yep.
They wouldn't necessarily have to work with the developer, but we have an exclusive agreement with the developer, so most likely still be with them.
So they could buy it outright and not have to be under the income requirements?
Correct.
Still build the exact same thing, they're just paying more for it?
Yep.
Got it. Okay. Thanks.
All right.
Anything else, sir?
Good questions.
Thanks, Shannon. All right, then I think we will entertain a motion to approve the resolution providing for the competitive sale of the Geo Tiff bonds.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion from the council? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, so item B, consider approval of RFP for auditing services.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So before you tonight is an RFP for auditing services. The last RFP we did for this service was back in 2011 for fiscal years 2011 through 2013, and since then, we've retained the same auditor from that last RFP. So, we'd be looking to sign another three-year contract, so we'll be looking for RFPs for various auditors. The RFP schedule that's included with your packet is to request for proposals beginning tomorrow. The due date for those proposals would be September 20th. Staff would review and follow up with those companies, those auditing firms, the 23rd through October 9th, and then tentatively scheduled for city council approval, October 15th. So again, still plenty of time for that 2019, fiscal year 2019 audit.
Okay, I agree with you.
There's any questions, other than that, we're just looking for a motion to approve the RFP as presented.
I mean.
Yeah, we talked about it already, so.
Yeah, I mean.
Good idea.
I think we haven't done it since 2011, it's probably.
Good exercise.
Good time. All right, we'll entertain a motion then.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion from the council? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item C, consider approval of purchase of a police squad vehicle.
Thank you.
Thanks, Shannon.
Shannon.
Have a good night.
Thank you. So, the police department is coming forward with a request to purchase a new squad vehicle. This was an anticipated request, it was planned for as part of our capital improvement plan and budgeted for as well. Just to give you some background on what their equipment replacement schedule is like, our squads are on a four-year replacement cycle, so every four years, they purchase a new one and then cycle them down through the various squads they already have, so they have a full life cycle of 12 years in the department. I think this is an interesting fact, talking with Chief Thompson, he described that when the department used to use Crown Vics as our police squad, they only lasted, we purchased them every three years, so they only had a full life cycle of nine years, so we're seeing three years longer of use of these vehicles, as well as, you know, they perform better, so all around, the Chevy Tahoe has been the preferred choice for our police department, so we're recommending the purchase of a 2020 Chevy Tahoe this year. As I mentioned, you know, this was budgeted as part of the CIP, there is a state bid for Chevy Tahos, so the included bid is from Ranger Chevrolet for a total of $37,104.14. However, I would note that in order to make this a complete police squad, there is a bunch of other equipment that we'll need to purchase to outfit the vehicle fully. So there was a complete list of that equipment included with your packet, just to summarize about the total additional cost of purchasing the rest of the equipment to outfit, the squad is a little over $11,500. So the total anticipated cost to purchase the squad and its equipment is about $48,600.
Is that, and where do we get that equipment from? Does it come, does some of it come right from the dealership, or?
It's a mix of vendors. Derek outfits most of the squads.
Right.
There's probably two or three primary vendors that we work with.
Yeah, and I'd say, I mean, props to our police department, especially Derek, they do a really good job of working with other departments if there's good used alternatives as well, so those are the options they typically look for. As I mentioned, this was anticipated and budgeted in the CIP, although I would note that the request is about just under $2,500 more than was budgeted due to the need to replace the camera system and radar, which are a little bit more than, than we'd seen in some previous years. But that being said, there are more than enough funds in the fleet budget to cover this request, so, you know, we'll be good on that, in that regard.
And then do we retire a vehicle, or what are we doing with that? Are we keeping it for the reserves?
Yeah, so that's still up for discussion with the police department, because it doesn't cost much the.
Cycle it down.
To cycle it down, we would be getting rid of essentially one of our old Crown Victorias.
Oh.
So, that would be what would be cycled out, but they're still deciding if they have a use for it, or if it should just outright be sold, so that may be a future request.
Yeah, you might see something different happen, I mean, we've discussed just about every alternative, including getting some sort of moped to go around town, like CSO style, or a four-wheeler that we would have some use for with like multi-department stuff.
Segway.
Sure. My point is, like, it, we don't have necessarily the room or the need for a squad car, but there might be a different type of piece of equipment that they could have use for.
Interesting.
Yep.
When, when something like that happens with the, it's $2,500 higher than anticipated, do you look forward then, or do we as a group, do you bring it forward and say, "Look, we're making adjustments right now because we're anticipating that the next time it could be another 2.5% or 4% higher?"
Actively.
Yep, I was gonna say, every time we make any type of reoccurring equipment purchase, when we actually get the final amount, we update our, our inflationary figures, so that way in future years, it better matches those estimates.
It's not, in this case, though, it wasn't the vehicle, it was the radar and the camera, it was the equipment stuff.
Yeah, in previous years, they've been able to kind of reuse some of that other equipment, but that's just not possible this time, so we need to purchase some additional for the squad.
Are there any other expenditures from that fleet fund that would be affected by taking the additional $2,500, $2,600 away from something else?
No, we've already bought a public works pickup for the year.
Mm-hmm.
And keep in mind, one of the cool things that Aurora was explaining, we've actually already extended the proposed purchase price by, or purchase year on this by a year, so there's actually some additional revenue that rolled in with this budget year as well.
Yeah, well, when we talked about, like, the other vehicle, when we talked about what the salvage value of, or the resale value of the last vehicle was, and we said, "Okay, it was $6,000 or whatever," and we said, "We can use that $6,000 for something else," or, in this case, we just retain it within that fund and use it for this, so we're really nope.
Right.
Nothing down.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
All right.
If there's no other questions, we'd be looking for a motion to approve the purchase of the 2020 Tahoe from Ranger Chevrolet for $37,104.14, and approve the additional equipment budget of $11,500.
I just have one question, was there anticipated delivery?
Yep.
Do we know one?
I, I don't have one yet, because we actually can't even, I think, get, put this order in exactly as of yet, it's early for the 2020 Tahos.
Okay.
So they don't have the exact delivery date yet.
Okay, all right. Well, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion from the council? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item D, consider approval of LOU for designing services for the Central Park Project Phase One.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So, the Central Park Project has been discussed a lot over the last year, and especially the last several months, the Parks and Planning Commission have been reviewing, you know, the concept plans, they've looked over, you know, a proposed phasing schedule and, and budget and all of that related to the Central Park Project, that's at the former middle school site. So, as well as the Parks and Planning Commission's involvement in planning, this has also been made available to the public, it was presented at the Chamber of Commerce Business Expo and has been displayed around town, including in City Hall. So following that public engagement period, you know, we, we brought back the concept plan to the Parks and Planning Commission at their May meeting, and they approved the concept plan and the proposed phasing plan. So, just to cover briefly what we've outlined in the various phases, is the first phase would include design and engineering work to regrade the site, add sidewalks, construct an amphitheater, add park signage, do some landscaping, lighting, and add benches. So these are the majority of baseline amenities that would go into the park, that would, you know, kind of be the foundation that the other amenities would be added on to in future years. So in Phase Two would be to design and construct the splash pad, and in Phase Three would be to design and construct the pavilion. And finally, we'd be looking to do possibly some road reconstruction work, but all of, and to enhance some pedestrian connectivity between what would be referred to as Central Park and what is currently Jaeger Field, but those would be completed at the same time that the 2023 street project was already proposed to happen in that area anyway. Just to give you a little bit of a background of how this phasing plan came about, first we decided that, you know, engineering and site plans, you know, to get the site ready for future work, made sense to happen first. We also separated park components in the way that they would be logically constructed, and then finally, we kept in mind our current budget, so we currently have about $270,000 in our, our new park fund, so these are dollars that can only be sent on the, spent on the construction of new parks. So given that that's kind of our current savings account for this project, we tried to limit the first phase to be inclusive of what we already have budgeted. Staff sought two proposals to work on some of that phase work, Phase One work that was outlined previously, the lowest recommended proposal is from Bolton &amp; Mink of a not-to-exceed amount of $31,400, and Bolton &amp; Mink, that agreement has been included with your packet. With a preliminary estimated construction cost of about $175,900 and the design proposal of about $31,400, that puts our anticipated cost for design and construction of about $207,300, which is, you know, below our current budget, which would be good to allow for contingencies as we get to finalizing the design work.
Okay. So, is Bolton &amp; Mink then, is this bid just to design Phase One, or it's the, it's for each phase?
It's to design Phase One. So, in talking with engineers about the project, it doesn't really make sense to design all of it at once, because once, you know, if we don't have the splash pad fully designed, or what if we wanna change it in a later year, then we already paid to design it a little bit, so considering that the elements are really separate, it doesn't make sense really to design all of it at once.
That makes sense.
The, so Phase One with regrade, or just doing some.
The, so Phase One with regrade or just doing some grading work and everything, is that gonna get, when we start approaching that, like, let's say the splash pad or other work that we're gonna do, is that work going to just, you know, be destroyed because of what we're doing now in Phase Two?
We're hopeful of the opposite, actually. So Phase One and the grading that we're doing will better position ourselves for Phase Two. For example, the concept plan includes a splash pad located at the corner by the parking lot, but we also need to remove that parking lot and do some grading to accommodate the splash pad. So it's basically setting up a building pad for that future development.
Yeah, and we'll have a survey completed, so we'll have a really good idea of what the existing conditions are, which will be better for actually designing the splash pad in Phase Two.
So Jason, maybe you can answer this question for me, and I don't want to put you on the spot, but
Oh, yeah.
I, I kind of take an issue with this amphitheater, and I told Nick and Aurora about this, only because I feel like, not only because, but partly because I feel like it doesn't seem to me like the best use of funds because personally, I don't think it's gonna be used that often, and so why not put in other amenities that we think will be used on a more regular basis? Can you just tell me kind of?
Well, yeah, that's part of the strategic plan that was in there, providing diverse amenities for people. But in, in looking at other communities, my, what I take from the other communities is there is some type of staging located surrounding a park area or, you know, in the case of Elk River, splash pad right there, amphitheater right there, they make use of the amphitheater though, they're making use out of it, whether it's a music in the park or it's some type of performance in the park, or in this case, I'm just speaking out loud, Good Neighbor Days. What if Good Neighbor Days were to move down into that park or some function of it? What would you, what would you think would be a better use of it?
I don't know, I don't know that I really have an idea. I mean, I guess I just feel like, I mean, a community of this size, and I get that, like in a community like Elk River or like Buffalo even, where it just seems like that sort of thing is more prevalent. I mean, not to say that we can't have it here or shouldn't have it or shouldn't try to have it, I just wonder if, you know, and I guess I don't know how elaborate the stage is and what the cost is and what it's gonna look like and what the footprint is. I mean, I have the drawing here, but I'm just not good with
I really believe that we're working towards the future on it though. So it might not be something right now that sits, sits with you that says, hey, this is a good idea, maybe not today, but maybe in five years. It, and some of the notes that I made on it is, are rather, is maybe taking some field trips, maybe meeting with local surrounding admins, council, get their feedback, like Winstead's small little amphitheater that's over there. I've never talked to those folks to find out how much use do they get out of that? What are they using it for on a regular basis? What does it cost? What did it cost?
Yeah, I think they do use theirs, but I think the key piece is that they have a very active community member group that does those sort of things. I mean, it's not part of the city, I mean, it is, I think, in terms of funding, but I think it's a volunteer organization that really puts those things on. You know, I think it's something like that that really makes something like an amphitheater a successful piece of a park. And so I'm not saying we're putting the cart before the horse, I think that's, you know, I think you have the foresight or the forethought to do that. I just, to me, it seems like, is it the best use of the funds? It's a limited space. And then like it makes me question, then what's the purpose of the gazebo? Like I get it, a gazebo's some stage, but you know, you know, we have a gazebo with an expandable event space, and then we have a multi-use stage with stone seating and, you know what I mean? Like, I don't think to people it screams park anymore. Now it, you know, it's a lot of open space with what appears to be a very modest splash pad, you know, when I get people asking for a splash pad and no one's ever asked me for amphitheater, you know what I mean? So I'm just going off of my personal experience with residents, not, I mean, I would love for it to be used, I just was curious as to the motivation.
Well, April, April Deppner had a lot of engagement with people at the expo, right? But I did not take away from any feedback that she offered or that Nick offered or that people said, hey, why do we have an amphitheater in there? Why do we have a gazebo in there? A lot of people were excited about the splash pad, but there were, the negative comments that I got out of it were, we do not like the street diet, the road diet. We do not like the one-way. And the one thing that's not in there, that you don't see in there, is what everybody was screaming for is restrooms, especially
Right, yeah.
A lot of, you know, just parents. I need, I need somewhere to take my child, I need to go to the restroom, where am I gonna go? I do not want to use a mini-biff. I would be an advocate for, I think it would be dollars well spent to look at a facility in there, restroom facility.
And that's, I mean, that's the issue you have when you have a large, comprehensive, futuristic, somewhat plan like this, is that people now focus on the things they don't like. They focus on the street, they probably ignored the other piece. They focused on the fact that there wasn't a bathroom, instead of focusing on, you know, the pieces that they maybe do like or that are actually going to happen or the functionality of it. So, I mean, I get why people do that. We all do it, right? You kind of get that hot button, just like as I have with the stage, right?
Yeah, and if I could jump in, kind of stepping back, the overall goal for the park is to provide kind of unique experiences that we don't already have in our park system. So that was a deliberate goal. But on top of that, be a deliberate place for events, celebrations, coming together where we don't necessarily have similar functions already. So we're deliberate with keeping in mind things that we're doing currently, like Good Neighbor Days, things that we're trying to improve upon, like even National Night Out. We've had the discussion at the staff level of other residents coming up to us and saying, hey, this was a really cool event, why aren't we doing these other three things? Like, we actually want to engage and support that. That's one of our strategic goals as a council, to get more people involved and active in our community. And we believe that the amenities that we have in this plan kind of seek to accommodate that. The overall cost, I know is kind of a driving consideration too, and I think that's fair. We're spending our money in an appropriate manner on an amphitheater. I think of the $170,000, we're estimating this to be about $20,000. Is that a fair figure? So it's not a huge chunk in comparison to that overall Phase One.
Yep.
And it's also a pretty modest footprint itself, where we're hoping to have a smaller concrete pad at the bottom of it with frankly seating that we can or cannot put in. Like, right now, we're proposing, I think, like better stone or casota stone on the hillside. But we might find that lawn chairs and using the topo that we have is a better use, and we could still use it in other ways too. So again, it's still concept to your point.
I mean, I've heard people ask for a skate park. Let's put a skate park in there instead. I, I mean, I think we could find a lot of different places for a skate park besides this location though, that, or something that we're of interest in moving forward.
I just, I mean, it just seems like when we first started talking about this before we bought the land and before, or before we were given the land, I should say, you know, like I see you have one music note thing here, we kind of always refer to Sturgis Park in Buffalo, and, you know, they have outdoor exercise equipment and all of that musical equipment. And I guess, I mean, maybe it's just my lack of imagination, but I thought that's the direction that we were going, and then now I don't see any of that, you know?
Well, and
I'm not saying that it's bad, I'm just wondering, I mean, if you're saying to people that you got good feedback with the exception of the street and the lack of bathrooms, then, you know, I don't know what I'm talking about, so that's fine.
No, you do. It's good, it's good.
What I'd also point out too is, I mean, the design is exactly what we're going to be working on, those specific amenities, how big is it gonna be? Where exactly on the site is it gonna be? I mean, what you're seeing before you is the concept plan that we used to engage the community, to talk to them about what they wanted. But, I mean, also keep in mind that one of the benefits of this being a phased plan is if there are new desires or changes, we can amend that concept plan over time and add different amenities in the park that aren't currently there. Phase One mostly includes those baseline amenities, like the sidewalks, some benches, some electrical power, things like that to kind of make it a more usable space, but as it's built up in future years, if there's a specific one that we haven't included, I mean, we can always modify to include some of those things. If a music note isn't the most popular thing, it should be something else.
Right.
You know, there's still room to make changes.
I love them. Surprising.
Okay. I mean, I'd love to have a pool or some large aquatic center in there too, but that, the amount of money those cost and the maintenance, the yearly maintenance.
Well, your bathroom facility's only slightly cheaper, so.
I'm not biting on the $250,000 for the bathroom facility, I'm not. I can build a stick-built shack out there.
You can.
We can.
You mean, you have the skills to that perhaps, but, okay. That's all I have, so.
Sure.
There isn't any other discussion, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the council? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Consider approval of scope of work for the community room library building.
Yes, so as we all are well aware, we've been working on water-related issues with our community room and library building. We have received two quotes for the same scope of services. The scope of services include exterior tuck point, re-roofing and resetting roof drains, trenching along the building and waterproofing walls, compacting and regrading surface soil away from the building, and landscaping around the building itself. Again, we've received two quotes. The low bid is Rice Facility Maintenance out of Glencoe, Minnesota, for a total project cost of $58,800. The one note that I do put on this is we've kind of hacked our way through this. Originally, as we were going through the water infiltration issue, we were considering hiring a building envelope specialist, I believe is the fancy title. Once we received a quote for those services to basically put together what we should be doing, we kind of deviated because it was a cost of $9,000 just to put that package together. So instead, we reached out to facility maintenance people, contractors, to water filtration specialists, and kind of put together the scope of services that you see here. I do highlight that though, because it is a slight change from what we were discussing a couple months ago. Frankly, I feel the $8,900 that we'd be spending on a plan of attack would be better spent on the building itself, but I'm highlighting that directly to council if you have other intentions or wants to proceed.
So will this disrupt the library service at all? Do we know? Or I guess, what's the schedule?
Probably not much, actually, because almost all of this is exterior work. They might hear some banging and that sort of thing, which they've been really good, you know, folks to work with over the last year anyway. Inside, there is still some exposed block walls that we need to sheet rock, that's not part of this. Again, we're doing the inch forward with incremental improvements at this building to make sure that we're doing the right thing, and I don't see that changing. So for example, something that's not included in this scope of services is testing that would happen after this project is done. So we would test once again to make sure that there's no new issues, that we've addressed what we need to, and at that time, we would come back and do sheet rock where it's already been disrupted. I would see the interior work being more obtrusive to the library and community room than what we're talking about here tonight.
Okay, that's good. I mean, do they have, is there a timeline in here?
It's been a while since I've spoke to them, but at least when I was talking to them, they wanted to get going as quickly as possible.
Yeah, I would imagine. Okay, and how are we paying for this?
We have a facility fund. This is not budgeted, but we do have the appropriate funds in our facility fund to cover this. Basically, what we're foregoing, at least for now, is a rooftop unit on this building and carpeting. So it's kind of a trade-off.
Well, we know it needs to be done.
Yes.
Right. Okay, so, well, we'll entertain a motion then.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the council? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item F, consider resolution approving various fund transfers. That sounds scary, but it's not scary.
It's not scary. These are mostly clerical items to clean up some fund balances that we have as recommended by both our auditors as well as our TIF consultant, Shannon Sweeney, who was with us earlier tonight. The proposed activities seek to close out previously decertified fund or TIF funds and transfer the dollars that are within those funds. So starting at the top, TIF 9 Stellar Health currently has a balance of $228. We actually need to send that back to Wright County for redistribution to the school, the city, and the county. So we actually will see probably about 70% of that come back after we do this activity. TIF number 11 is related to the industrial park where there's about $38,000. This is related to an old interfund loan that has been fully satisfied and then some. This would be transferred back to the general fund for use. TIF 14 is related to churning trails in Dutch Lake Preserve, currently has $3,400, and that would be transferred back to the general fund. There are two TIFs that presently have negative fund balances. TIF 12, which is related to the industrial park, that was actually one of the very earliest expenses that we had with the park, and I just don't think it was cleaned up with TIF administration. The second is from the Dir Dahl TIF district, and that has $2,400 in the rears. Keeping in mind that that included the corner hardware store as well as the bank, and you're talking about a $5 million project, and at the end of the TIF district, we're in the hole about $2,000, that's actually a pretty good moment. One of the other disclaimers that I make with that too, we've, we've learned a lot since that bank project and some of the things that, some of the things that you
So that's a learning expense, is that what you're calling it?
You know, I wasn't here, so it's easier to say that. But basically, the biggest thing that happened in that is a minimum assessed value that just did not support the TIF district itself. We intentionally set minimum values moving forward that we know will cover the value that we need to support in the interfund. But again, that was a hit of $2,400. That's not cash loss per se, but that would decrease our cash position that you see in your audit by $2,400.
So do you decommission the districts then when they're, when these are all Yeah, actually, all of these have already been decertified.
That's a mandatory action that happens almost automatically. Like, I fill out that paperwork as they come forward. So these are decertified, but we have not cleaned up the fund balances like on our accounting software.
So then going forward with future TIF districts, when they become decertified, we should go through this
Yeah.
Exercise?
Yep.
You just pay for your police vehicle.
There you go. I also note, one of the other things that I'm including on the same resolution is a transfer from the water fund to the Historic City Hall project of $15,000. This is to cover water main lines and the sprinkler main line to the building itself. That's an eligible transfer. If you guys do not want to proceed with that, we still have adequate funds in that project, but speaking to our financial advisor and to the auditor, this is an acceptable use. And we have adequate funds in our water fund as well, so I'm proposing that one as well.
So you're transferring from the water fund to the project fund to offset the expense of installing the
Water line, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
I see. We're paying ourselves, basically.
Yeah.
Fine. Questions, council?
No.
All right, we will entertain a motion then.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion from the council? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item G, consider approval of change order number six for the Historic City Hall project.
Yes, in front of you is some materials, including your agenda item, that shows a failing retaining wall on the north end of the building. Presently, it's constructed out of wood. Roughly the same improvements were there when a deck was on top of it, and I think a deck with more posts and footings surrounding it could support the soil around this, but now that the deck is gone and we are looking at a wooden retaining wall, not a contractor, but it's pretty easy to see that that retaining wall is not, not holding back the dirt.
Yeah.
We have worked considerable alternatives with Gopher State to come up with the most cost-effective solution to move forward. These include ultimately what we have in front of you with a poured wall, but keep in mind that we did consider landscape blocks, modular blocks, beefing up what you see here with the wood. We believe that the most cost-effective solution to the problem is a poured wall, which would replace these two wooden retaining walls that you see, but also extend out 12 feet on either side to hold back the rest but also extend out 12 feet on either side to hold back the rest of the soil in front of the elevator and in front of the building. The change order at $12,994 includes the retaining wall, the necessary earthwork, because you have to move away all the dirt that you presently see, as well as put geo grid so that water doesn't collapse up against the new wall and, I believe that's it, oh, and tile. Tile to carry the water away. Do you have any questions?
I'm, it's been so long since we've looked at the topography of what's going to happen back there behind that structure for landscape and everything else, and when we're looking forward to renting it for events and everything else, you know, I'm just envisioning that we need, you know, something aesthetic-wise is pleasing for, if people want to go down there and take photos and if they're, you know, looking at the back of the building or if they're looking at the lake, or what's going to be, that's the only thing that comes to my mind moving forward is we're putting in a poured wall. I'm sure that's going to look great, but what's going to go around at that type of thing?
Yeah, I think that's a really good question, Jason. So at, I think it was change order four, we did approve grading around the building itself. I can't quickly pull up-
No, that's fine.
Kind of what that would look like, but basically what we would do is have a nice gradual slope away from the building. Right now, it's kind of this hodgepodge of topo surrounding the building. We'd hope to make that look a little bit more continuous and slope away from the building in one grade. Right now, I think it kind of meets elevation at three or four spots, which is kind of funky. The poured wall will be far more attractive than a failing wooden wall. But that being said, from day one with this project, our focus has not been on this side of the building. It's been almost the exact opposite, to be mindful that it's utilitarian in nature.
Well, it's going to be grass, right? Like grass and then kind of a drive. I don't know, I went, Nick asked me to go look at it last week, one day, or whenever that was. And I don't even know that the picture, I mean, you can tell the wall is leaning, but when you see it in person, it was-
Yeah.
Yeah, it was actually worse. I just mentioned to Tom, maybe we should consider painting that door at some point or getting a new door.
There will be a new door. I haven't seen a cost on it, but it's toast.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, Nick and I went down there in Aurora. I looked at it also. That wall is leaning quite a bit.
I don't think they have much of a choice.
Right.
Do we?
Yeah, I mean, one of your alternatives could be to ignore it and hope for the best, but it is actively failing right now.
We're on really good luck with that.
Nope.
No.
All right.
I just think, you know, once you get the poured walls in there and start cleaning up some of that aesthetically, it'll look pretty good.
Yeah.
And being able to tie in the new parking lot and be able to-
Yep.
Transition from there down.
Change order seven is the parking lot, so.
A nice ornate, a nice ornate stairway to get down there.
Okay.
Yep.
It's a good idea.
Well, that's, we'll entertain a motion then.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the council? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. There's no old business that I am aware of. Item L, administrator's report, do you have anything to share?
The one thing that I want to bring up, we've been working pretty regularly with MINDA on the proposed 2021 or 2022 highway project that's coming through on Highway 12. You will see soon some special meeting requests to workshop with MINDA staff, followed by a deliberate community, kind of like open house, for some of the things that we're proposing. After struggling to get on their radar for some time, things have accelerated quite quickly. And they would like a preliminary street section submitted to the state by the end of October.
Oh, really?
Of course they do.
I think we've done quite a bit of, um-
What does that mean exactly?
Basically, it would be the width of the roadway, the width of the sidewalks.
They want to know what we want?
Yes.
Got it.
Yep. I credit Aurora and Josh. All three of us have been kind of needleling away at them to figure out what this project scope really includes, what they're willing to pay for, what we would need to come forward with. We will have a local share if you want to see some of these increased pedestrian connectivities or connections that we've discussed. But it's happening, and it's happening soon, so you will see some requests come forward to you yet this week to meet with MINDA.
Okay. Hard turf for theirs.
Always here, home, home field.
Okay, good to know. All right, then I guess item M, we'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Could we get an update on where we're at with the street repairs?
Yeah, good, actually, do you want to take it? Because I think you had the date.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, council, I have been speaking with Minnesota, and actually in conjunction with your neighbor, they have some very similar projects, the city of Coquado. Next week, they actually intend to do waterman's streets, Dutch haywood. Those two would be done conjunctionally together, doing one, the milling of it, and then the overlay of those areas. Muntz and Lake, so it was identified that they are temporarily working on temporary scale, as I understand it. And directional traffic through their facility wouldn't accommodate, obviously, getting that done prior to, we had, I believe we had a September 1st deadline. So after September, we will see their facility operations change and resume back to normal where they can go into Ninth Avenue, which is down there in front of Muntz, and that be repaired in the month of September. But next week, we should see the millings take places up in the neighborhoods there.
For, for the residents that aren't aware of it, or don't tune in, what is a typical notice given? Is it, are we, are we just staking and 24 hours beforehand, 48 hours, what, what happens?
Yeah, I mean, you nailed basically the scope of what we'll be doing.
Yep.
We won't mail anything, but we will put stuff out probably a day or two in advance.
So you said next week, I'm sorry.
Next Thursday was the anticipated date to get the miller. The miller, I mean, will really take for these areas, not even a matter of a couple of hours, and each, even the paving and bringing in, you can probably project not even a half a day. These areas are receiving substantial subgrade corrections, et cetera. It's really milling the bad areas out and filling them in with the two minutes. So if all things are in good order, it should go very fast and limited disruption to the neighbors.
And back to Jason's comment, just so, I mean, I know we're going to do whatever we can to let people know, but you know, Kielox have daycare right where that's getting fixed.
I had the discussion with her directly. She was actually the one that clued me in on that we should be a little bit more proactive with informing folks, so it's on our radar.
I can just put on our neighborhood Facebook page.
Perfect. Yep.
This water main, this issue that we had on the street here, is that being included in any?
Yeah, there's three additional patch work that will be reviewed at some point.
Was there any other update on the work out at Lyons, the additional work that needs to happen out there?
Yeah, so I've been talking with Wright County Soil and Water. They're working on a rain garden redesign. We've reached out to the FFA to see if they'd be interested in doing any of the work on putting in the last bit of bullet edgers before the last native plantings go in. They, and speaking with Wright County Soil and Water, they wouldn't want to put in the new native plants in that area until fall. They say that's the best time to put those in, so we'd be expecting that this fall.
Yeah, I continue to hear nothing but positive things out there, which is really good, you know, people thanking, thanking the, you know, parks and planning, you folks, us folks, just, so yeah, it's been, it's been positive out there.
National Night Out, I think, was really good for people to see it.
Yeah.
And a lot of people really commented on the cleanliness of the lake itself, like the water clarity is so much better this year. So I naturally took credit for that as well.
It's getting, it's getting better.
But I think that helps, you know, I mean, having a beach is one thing, but having a, you know, good quality lake is definitely helpful, so.
Yeah, and I'd actually tag on to that. We put out another newsletter and one section of that newsletter, which is available on our website, and I believe we linked it to it off of our Facebook page, and we have hard copies in City Hall and at the farmer's market each week, was talking about what we're seeing in terms of improved water quality, transparency.
Yeah, I saw that.
Stuff like that for the lake, so that is true, what people are saying.
Does anyone know the reason of that? I mean, is it just fluke? Is it?
We've, I say we, and that's a very broad ownership statement, but folks like the Watershed Alliance have been deliberate with their efforts, including treating the lake, maintaining, testing. Some of it is somewhat circumstantial, how we had a agreeable spring and summer in terms of rain events that did not destroy surrounding habitat. Wright County Soil and Water has been pretty aggressive with some of the larger tracts of agriculture around the lake that feed into it as well. So they can't point to any one item, but I think the collective effort has been yielding success.
I, I look at, you know, just my hypothesis in a way is looking at that giant sponge that was the golf course, giant filter that's out there.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure it has a, yeah, it has a fact, for sure.
If I may make a few notes or indications, so I mean, granted, there's been a lot of point source implementations of for water quality, but you gotta be mindful that there has been a large quantity of water rainfall. And, and the old saying was for, to get quality, you need quantity, or the old saying of dissolution to pollution, or, um-
Delusion.
Solution to pollution is dilution. Yes, I hate using that.
Well, he couldn't do it.
Old terminology, but the amount of water coming in and out has obviously flushed a lot of the contaminants.
Well, that's kind of what I thought too, like, well, it's been wet this year, but.
But that being said, not too much, because if you recall, one of our worst years was the flood of 2010 or 11, whatever that was, which destroyed the lake.
Right, because that was because of runoff.
What about the culvert?
Yes, so the Dutch Lake water was, we've been kind of calling it internally, review of that, and we have went out and actually documented your water levels that you are experiencing out there, and they are perched, they're well above the OHW, the ordinary high water level. Considering on what to do next, our next steps is we're ready to hand this off to, and my first point of contact is going to be the DNR area hydrologist responsible for the waters of the state, which includes Dutch Lake, Mount Lake, and even your lake, Howard Lake, and say, hey, this is a problem. This has been a problem that I feel should have been mitigated or should have been drawn down even through our, I'll call it a dry or stretched during the month of July. We didn't see the, the, the spring rains or even, you know, later fall, we're catching up there on larger rainfall events. What is the problem or the cause of that? And I want them to point to us why it is. One, we've identified there has been some changes made out there. Have those changes been documented and well engineered? Are they actually create a damming effect out there with the new culverts? Because there has been not only the culvert installation, but also downstream cleaning of the ditches where a downstream effect shouldn't be holding up the water on the upstream side. So we are still investigating, you know, the causes and obviously we're, we're going to point the finger, show us why.
Because whose culvert is it? Is it the?
It's the one on the, be the northeast corner of Dutch Lake where it goes into the 12, actually, it goes from there to the 12 Mile Creek. Along, uh-
So it's a road, it's under the road, or is it just a drainage culvert, like for?
My understanding is, Mr. Mayor and Council, that it's a township road. Presumably, only any township road also presumes the maintenance of any culverts or structures within its right-of-way. However that said, it's still dictated as far as the elevations, the materials, everything related to the water by DNR. So we do have to retalk to them on the reasoning for the flooding events.
And to be clear, we're not sure if that's an issue, the issue, or one of many. I mean, we've worked with that adjacent property owner in the past to do some dredge work, if you recall, like five or six years ago. That seemed to help for a while, but now what Josh is finding through the surveying that he did in the backyards down there, reviewing circumstances, talking to folks, I think it's going to be more than just one, one focal point.
Right, because there was that road that was put in-
Yep.
Off of 80th to go back into where that home was built. And they ended up putting a culvert in that driveway, which I think was too small, or wasn't set right or whatever that's causing some of that backup also.
To be honest, that's my initial, from what I know and have gathered in the history, it was a single inline culvert, and it has been replaced with two 24-inch corrugated metal pipes versus one larger, and I don't know what the previous size was. But I would like to see those plans and signed plans, doing a risk assessment on how much backwater or capacity those pipes had to indicate they did indeed the new design was able to keep and maintain the previous water levels.
So are there other properties that, you know, are not within the city limits that are having effects as well?
We have heard from one township resident that's maintaining one of the culverts that we're talking about. They're just tired of cleaning out debris from the culvert and asking us to do it, and I just kind of put up the hands pretty quick on that one. But the, the communication sincerity back was, I mean, we're all kind of in this together, and I think we all need to put our heads in to figure out the solution. If you recall, when that dredging project came forward in 2012, Barry Galenkey, the former, former engineer, and I spent a ton of time tracking down a lot of the same stuff that we're doing right now. And there's a lot of dead ends and hearsay and speculation. I think Josh is doing a pretty good job of chasing the right stuff down.
And just, actually, I checked with the former, Barry Galenkey, and he gave me a list of names, and I think unfortunately, a lot of these people are no longer there. Specifically, the DNR area hydrologist was Roger Stradel. I don't think he's there anymore. Clean Allen was with Wright County Soil and Water, and they were responsible for some of that dredging downstream. Again, we gotta put some feelers out and get everybody back on board, but it might be some different appointments now.
All right.
Good questions, guys. Anything else? I think we're ready to adjourn. Then if someone would like to make that motion.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the council? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, meeting adjourned. We don't have a word?
No.